I don't know. It's eight o'clock, on time, on target. Welcome to the convening of the first of three or four separate Tuesday morning budget hearings over the next coming month, moving towards our September 30th deadline. This morning is a special work session called, which all the council are welcome to and expected to attend, but it's primarily spearheaded by the Finance Committee. There are no minutes to be adopted. We will do no voting today. This is mostly a discussion and question mode. So with that, budget overview is the first thing on our agenda this morning. Who's going to do that? Becky, is that you? Who's? Oh, I'm sorry. I looked at and saw revenue overview. It's budget overview.
So the, what I thought we could do first thing this morning is just to go over what the book is and what's in front of you. What the council will be asked to vote on, what will be put up for a vote, is actually in this book. All other ancillary items are for...
Billory, what?
All their ancillary items that will ever be passed out, handed out, shown in a presentation or given to you are just for consideration and support the actual numbers that are in this book.
Alright, so this, along with any amendments or modifications, constitutes the equivalent of what's written on our agenda when we vote typically on Tuesday afternoon.
That is correct.
Great.
There is other information in here for consideration as well, but when you look at the different various pages that look like this, these are...
What page?
These are, and it literally just pick a page and flip to it, and if you see something that looks like this, there's multiple ones of this in this book.
I understand that, but I want it so that we can get a good idea of what we're looking at.
Sure, okay. So then let's just, we'll go to one that is...
Page eight to General Fund Fire Rescue.
There you go. So, actually, this is not that. Let's start on, if you'll go to page 79, we'll actually start with Fire Rescue because it is a nice and comprehensive one. Within this book, within the, this is Fire Rescue's book that starts on page 79. The beginnings of these sections will have a cover page, which is what you see right in front of you on that page. It will start at the very top with a little blurb about what the service provided by this department actually is. So at the top for Fire Rescue, you'll see the department actually does, and then right below it is a very quick summary of the expenses listed within the department. That summary will be divided into two separate sections. The first section will show any divisions within the department, and then their budget breakdown in totality. The next section will be a breakdown in expenditure category, so total salaries, total utilities, total maintenance contracts, things of that nature. So you'll kind of see, then right underneath that table on those cover pages, you will see something called the Budget Highlights for each department. That small section under Budget Highlights will tell you what has changed between the fiscal year '22 budget.
For instance, there's not, I don't, let's say, unless I missed it, there's not anything here like a new fire truck.
So equipment will be listed, this are just operating, this is just for operating.
Oh, okay, it's separate.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Equipment will be separate, and we'll go over that in a second. So just within the operating style of activities, that's what these Budget Highlights are for. Every single department, non sworn individuals, that will be a COLA and one step increase. And then for public safety sworn under their new pay plan, that will be the full pay plan of one step increase. So you will see that pretty much on every single department. And then the secondary bullet point will be Rescue on page 79. You will see that there was an increase of $10,600 in utility expenditures. That would be, what we normally do is we normally ask departments to level fund themselves. They will go through and, yes, sir, sorry.
Go back and repeat one thing. COLA, is it again two and a half? What is a COLA?
So, okay, very, very, very good question. So we have two separate pay plans, correct? We have a non sworn play, pay plan, and then a sworn pay plan. Let's go over them separately. In the non sworn pay plan, so that's 6%, and then the one step increase is 1.5%.
So backing up, last year, the, we gave a COLA increase to the employees in April, right? Alright, so did we only give a two and a half percent increase?
In April.
Of last year? Was that all we did last year? I thought we did 5%.
We did do 5%. So we did 2.5% starting October 1, and then we did another 2.5%. Sorry, I told you that the way that we...
Did we do a step? I can't remember, Carly.
We do do a step for non sworn, and then...
I'm talking about last year. The budget we're in right now, we did not, right?
We did not, you're correct. We did not.
But remind me, there was, we have to, it's not automatic. We have to, I forget, something happened. What did we have to do that we had to vote?
So, so under the non sworn pay plan, as listed in code, those items are not met. So this upcoming year, we'll do a COLA and one step, so we will still have to suspend the pay plan.
One, one, one step?
Yes, sir.
Because that comes up automatically, and we have to do that. Right, where that's, is that in code, right?
What's it, well, what's in code is COLA and two steps.
COLA and two steps, okay, okay. Because we, that's why we had to do that last year. We had to come back and, okay.
That's correct. And so we'll do that again this year if the, now, under the sworn pay plan, so any other questions about the non sworn pay plan? So for public safeties pay plan that was passed last year, that pay plan only requires one step, but their step is two and a half percent. And so we will, that pay plan, we'll just rock and roll on through, and that is what is budgeted in this recommendation.
So that's, that's automatic?
The step, yeah.
Because we're going to go down into many, many detail like this, but I have delusions of staying on schedule. Let's, let's use the 15 minutes we've got left on this, Carly, to address for us the issues at the 50,000-foot level. We're bringing, we're forecasting bringing this much in, putting this much up Elevate, and then, and then let's come down from there.
So then we can start General Fund. If you will flip to page 23, that's where I'm going to start. You'll see the General Fund summary. This will be the overall picture of the General Fund. First, we will start with revenues. That table on the, on page 23, you will see that the total overall 2023 proposed budget is $175 million.
So that's what the budget forecasting, taking into account our normal practice of level plus one, and then is there, we have talked, Mayor, about an inflation as a departure from our normal forecast.
Sure. So our, so, yeah, correct. So our normal forecasting methodology is that we will budget for the next fiscal year, level amounts of what we project to collect in the current fiscal year. So in fiscal '22, per our projections, we think at the end of the fiscal year, we will end up with X. And so therefore, we budget X for the next fiscal year to come in.
And is that what this 175 is?
Yes and no. So in most, in most categories, yes, that is what is in the 175. There are certain pieces and parts in there where we have said, we do expect, or we can forecast very conservatively, a small amount of property tax.
That's okay. But I might ask one more question, and I'm gonna stop violating my own request that we keep it up high. So in terms of what we had talked about, an inflation adjustment, because we're ticking away at nine and change, right?
Yes, sir.
Not we, the city.
I think, I think 8.9, 8.9...
The economy.
Yes, sir, is the last I heard.
So on the revenue side, do we say, well, the bulk of ours is sales tax, and if inflation is 9%, and we're collecting a portion of sales, of sales as our sales tax, we, we mostly think of inflation as impacting us on our expenditure side? Or what are we doing there? Big, big, big level things. I just need to know what the premise is and the assumptions are.
Sure. So our general thought process, especially during revenue projection, was to assume that there could possibly be a recession period in this upcoming fiscal year. The recessionary period combined with the, to a zero impact.
So that's, that's the operating assumption we've moved forward on, is that, yeah, prices are going up, so we'll collect more sales taxes, but sales are slowing because there's a recession. And we're essentially saying, it's probably about a wash.
I, I, that's what I, that's what we're generally forecasting. I will say that I think that's an extremely conservative place to...
...into the budget on the expenditure side.
Yeah, that's what you're fixing to address now, right? What are the assumptions there?
Again, that's another firewall that's built into the budget, hopefully that your expenditure levels either maintain or decrease. Hopefully those costs will continue to decline, but we're assuming we're at where we were last month.
Okay. So one, one more question, and then I'm gonna let you move over. So we just finished talking about the assumptions on our revenue side. We're getting into the assumptions on our expenditure side. Here's a question I want to, are those assumptions different in different segments of our budget? So are we, are we looking at the General Fund side and saying, you know, that's mostly water and sewer side, whoa, that's a, you know, there's 30%, and I, I don't know what the number, I'm just trying to understand, we're concluding what assumptions we've made on the General Fund side? 175 in, we'll make it 175 out. Check. Same assumptions in both big buckets of our city budget?
No. So we, if we want to transition to the water and sewer side, that starts on page 185.
And I, and I realize I'm asking questions that are, have to be overly simplified to keep us at the level we're going, but we're going to be...
General Fund, obviously with water and sewer, there's quite a few less categories of revenue types, but we have a proposed $60,984,000 of revenues coming in. Now, like Mr. Busby just mentioned, the Water and Sewer Fund is, does not require to be leveled, leveled budgeted. So the expenditures will not equal the...
Let's one more time to end it with, so the expenditures will not equal the revenue.
Sure. So the Water and Sewer Fund, the General Fund is required by state statute to be balanced. We must not expend more money than we are, we do not make that a practice because we like to keep our reserves as whole as possible.
Okay.
The Water and Sewer Fund does not get that same treatment. There is no requirement to have a balanced budget in the Water and Sewer Fund. So therefore, we do not.
Check.
But then on page 186, you will see the proposed expenditures of $64.4 million.
Check.
One thing that I will tell you that we do in the Water and Sewer Fund that is not necessarily, you know, I guess, appropriate for budgeting expense, and we budget...
Where, is that in this 160, is that in this 64 depreciation's in there?
Yes, sir.
And it's ballpark 10?
Nine million.
Nine?
We, so we budget, we fully budget depreciation expense, and we also fully budget the pay down in principle for our debt. You do not budget the pay down in principle for debt under a utility fund. But we do because we, number one, we like to have truth in advertising about what actual expenditures will be, and then also to keep us on the more conservative end of things. It makes us be...
We issued 45 or 50 million dollars of bonds in the early summer to, for the water and sewer side. Then what we see in here projected for the expenses of 23, the 64.5 for those bonds.
Okay, very good.
And the, where, Carly, is the, the nine million in depreciation? Is it in that, that just simple, is it in other operating or in Water and Sewer Department?
It's in the other operating. So...
So that 33.6 includes nine?
And, and the debt service as well.
And that both of them are in there, okay.
Yes, sir. That's why that's so high.
Ballpark?
Total, for all debt in Water and Sewer.
So 13.3?
13.3, yes, sir.
So out of that 33.6 under other operating, 13.3 is us going ahead and taking our licks in the current period. One last question, and I'm gonna shut up on Water and Sewer. That nine, which we show as an expense, I mean, if you, you look at that and scratch your head and go, oh my God, we're only bringing 60, we're only bringing 60.9 in, but we're putting money, we're keeping money but showing it expense, right?
Correct. Yeah, nine, nine million is a non cash transaction.
Where does that nine go?
What is that, what do you mean, where does the nine go? Sorry.
I'm, I'm sure the fault is in how I've asked the question. And, and I've asked it before, Carly. We show a $9 million...
Outflow.
Incursion of expense.
Sure.
But that never really leaves the building.
Correct. In, in doll, in like actual, like dollar bills. Yes, correct.
So, money, right?
Real money. Well, build money.
Hang on, real money. We're, we're, on the, on the budget, we're putting out 64.4.
Yes, sir.
Right? If we take nine away from that 64, well, money coming in and out, 60.1 came in, but only 55 went out. Check?
Yes, sir.
Where is that six?
So a lot of that will be included in like any surplus transfer that you have. We'll go over to be able to create new projects, because ultimately, what you should be doing...
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's gonna really show up in your cash position in the Water and Sewer Department, Water and Sewer Fund.
Is, is that where it shows up?
Some of it.
Cash position?
Some of it's gonna just be a balance out on your asset versus liabilities.
But it has to stay in Water and Sewer, right? Because the, the theory, the theory is, right, yeah, you, we need, the theory is that that's because we're sticking it somewhere to go back into infrastructure.
Well, you put, you put out the money when you built the asset. So if you think about it, when you expended money to build the asset alone, you didn't show the outflow of cash, didn't show the outflow in your net income number when you built the asset. So now you're showing the periodic outflow of income as your asset is depreciating.
Period. Say that again, Slo. Alright.
And we would like to discuss at the council, with the council at some point, and that is, right now, I think, our surplus, and it's not the traditional General Fund surplus, where at the end of the year, you balance it out, you got a number like 15 million, and you move it over. Water and Sewer being an enterprise fund is a lot more complicated. So right now, we take 30% of unrestricted net assets. I think I've got that right.
We take, we take 30% of operating expenses.
30% of operating expenses, and maybe we could use. Yet, we're sitting on cash that's there that could be used, that we've used in the past to move that debt number down. Like everything, I don't think you want a policy that then you go in and you take cash, either you rob out your cash. But I do think, thinking about how we do that after the budget, because that will, you know, could impact future Water and Sewer operations, would be wise. But you don't want to go use debt if you got cash on you either.
Can you pay as you got?
If you can, if you meet your ordinance that you gotta have set aside, and to deal with any emergencies that come into play. I do think it's, I'd like us to look at that. Certainly, this wouldn't be the venue to do it, but, you know, we're in really good position, but there's, did I say that correctly, Carly? I don't want to, if I've said anything wrong, please correct.
No, absolutely. So the, the only thing that I will say, so that the 30% of operating expenses is the reserve balance within our fund balance that we have to keep per code. And that is what the rating agencies look at. I will tell you that we have, like the mayor said, we have done the analysis on if we were to move to what we've all talked about, previous ratings. If we were to do that, like the mayor said, there is a certain amount of, of the balance that kind of gets freed up that you can use. We are over, per Moody's look, we are over reserved in the Water and Sewer Fund, if that's the way that you want to, if that's what you want to call it. Obviously, a more conservative basis, I think that the reserve is nice the way that it is.
So in, in, what I meant by balance, Mr. Busby, is that we don't need cost at all, nor should we. And having that 20% would fit the Moody's calculus. But then why, if you can pay for something in cash, why would you go debt? And I think creating that balance is something capital, it doesn't have to be decided as part of this budget, but I think after the budget, it could be a very good positive on it in telling us that, making certain that we check all the boxes.
Alright, Carly, I, one last question, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you touch on Elevate, and then we're gonna give it to Becky to talk revenue. Recession.
Yes, sir.
As we move over to the Water and Sewer side, what, what assumptions, if any, have we made on our cost there?
We have done the same.
We, we treated them both the same.
Yes, sir. We've done the same, and one of the, some of the major cost areas that we have seen inflationary prices on, and that we have adjusted within our budget, are going to be, again, auto fuel, auto maintenance, and then our chemicals used in water treatment. Those will be the three big areas that you will see inflationary budget, page 249. And within that, you'll see the same general cover page that I mentioned in the beginning. You'll see revenues broken down in the, in the very top table. So currently, in the 2023 proposed budget, we have $43.4 million of revenues proposed.
For revenues are the base amount taxes, plus the grants that are, the leveraging through grants.
Correct. Yes, sir. So like in 20, in fiscal '22, we have the $15 million Build Grant that kind of inflated it from '21, and that sustains Elevate, is that top number under taxes, which is proposed for fiscal '23 is basically $25 million.
22.8, 22.5, to 25.
Yes, sir. Question?
Let's do expenses on the Elevate side.
Okay. Now, expenses on the Elevate side will not really include inflationary costs except for the fact of just projects themselves and supply costs going up. So, you know, Elevate does not have general operating expenses listed in it. They are based on projects and programs. So you will see...
We're proposing of that 25 million that gets brought in in taxes, check? 24, 9, 9, 9, 9, 9.
Yes, sir.
25 million gets brought in. For the coming year, we're proposing 3 million, another 2 million goes to education initiatives.
Yes, sir.
And then 5.8 is going to debt service. The 9 million transferred to other funds, what is that?
Total transfer to other funds will be, and I, you can see the actual detail of it on page 258. This includes the $5 million Environmental Service, Environmental Services fee, basically the garbage fee that we were charging the citizens.
We're on 258, Carly?
Yes, sir, on 258. So on that very right-hand column, under the mayor's recommendation, you'll see the $5 million coming in the middle of the page. That's the biggest. Then you'll see another big one, the 3.99 million, that is to the Public Safety Pay Plan that was agreed to prior year. And then you'll see some small amounts. So the 437,000 is for the IPS crews that have been set up to maintain Elevate projects that are...
Whores normally reside in our expense?
So those, so the general costs, like the salaries and the, and the, and the auto fuel and things like that for that crew, sit in the General Fund. Elevate then reimburses... Any other question? So that's, that is the, the basis of the total for the transfers.
So what's the, when we, back on the page 250, when we say transfer to other funds, $9 million.
That is basically...
On page 258...
There are the 400 and, let me get Jack's actual numbers. This is gonna be a little bit, little bit of a flip, of a flip party. So on page 250, you see the transfer to other funds is 8.9 million. If you flip to 258, that directly adds up to the 5 million in General Fund garbage subsidy, and then the 3 point, the, you know, 20,000 for utilities, and then at the very bottom, the 150,000 for facility renewal. Those are all encompassed in the operations and maintenance line on page 250, that 2.99 amount. Because they are operations and maintenance, they are not just general transfers.
Alright.
Now, you wanted to go to capital projects to discuss?
The first fund that we'll get to is the General Fund Reserve for Future Improvement Fund, and you will see the total amount of fire equipment, and then things that, airport property purchase, things of that nature, will then fall out of the General Fund. Equipment awarded through the General Fund during the fiscal '23 departmental budget hearings, we then transfer to... So you'll see all of the, then we have the ARPA money, Coronavirus Relief Fund information. Those are all of our capital funds that really have activity, projects that came through our General Fund surplus analysis.
Current, when you're looking at current budget, current available, that shows as budget, does that number hold over?
Yes, sir. That's awarded through, you know, like a, a fire truck takes 18 months to oil into perpetuity until it's actually spent.
To spend.
Yes, sir. So yes, you are correct. It just rolls.
And it stays in that bucket until, or that account until it's spent?
Yes, sir. Or reappropriate, or we'll move it out.
It is Cortel, I think the other member remaining minutes we've got in this session to get to revenue, these are supposed, and then to the...
I think Carly hit one of the highlights really hard. So our general methodology, again, given a new hotel that's coming up, to the three exceptions, does anybody have any, about $650,000 in additional revenues this year? And then Water and Sewer, so we are adding a 10% increase.
A what?
A 10% increase on Water and Sewer revenues. So that, that's the full 10% that we are adding.
Okay, and I think in his briefing last, last week, I think the mayor, that, that 10% increase was...
Of that.
The, was it nine, Mayor? Some big portion of that cost.
If we were to do, under the council, the, the 6% amended for, there's no magic to it, just leveling it off at 10 at this point, and with 1.1, I figure we can make up that three tenths of all things off. There, there's so many inflationary impacts, which is, I felt like, do feel we have to move, we have to move our cost with the CBI 4%.
Revenues, same methodology for General Fund, forecasting equal to projections for this year.
I've just got a question.
Yes, sir.
Could costing this that much money, could I have the red light on? Or what's, should be the revenue?
Money coming in.
No, sir. This is, this is a revenue source, so...
I mean, okay.
Yes, sir. That's the revenue section. So on revenue line, I have items that flow into those categories. Any questions?
Yeah, no, I, when you and I met yesterday, you and I talked about, as, as the council members, as we look back on page 24.
Yes, sir.
Where we see are some, some eye-catching differences, both above and below, in there that is attributable to changes in our organizational structure. Could you take a few minutes and, and summarize that? Facilities and grounds. 2021, eh, 7 million, 2022, 7.4, 2020, 12.3, huh? 2023 is 4, 4 and 1/4. So you're almost a million, you're pushing a million dollars less. Talk to us about where, and expenses that had been housed over here now show up in this, talk to us about that.
Yes, sir. You're absolutely correct. If you will recall, two weeks ago during Advent Committee, I think, Ms. LaShonda Kim, and within those, you know, that reorganization, there were some operational centers that were kind of shuffled in between different departments. One of the main things that you can think about as an example is the idea of, of Rite of Way and Landscaping. Rite of Way and Landscaping, in, most people will remember that kind of like as a T dot name. So under the T dot name, Rite of Way and Landscaping, all of the crews for that, all of the equipment usage for that, that kind of set in IPS infrastructure. Under the proposed organization, that is now going to sit... Under the proposed organization that is now going to sit under constrounds, that infrastructure piece is now also getting environmental services added to it. So you can see that eat, like, so something like ESD as a cost center is moving into, into a construction facilities and grounds section. So you can kind of see how there would be like ebbs and flows with that, with that, just that one or two different cost centers moving within the organizational. Mr. Busby pointed out exactly that under construction facilities and grounds on that line item, about a quarter of the way down. You know, fiscal 22's budget, when it was, you know, previously called Logistics and Asset Management, proposing 12.3 million. All of those changes and organizational structural, you know, and the dollars that flow with them, we have tried to track very closely. So I can tell you that the numbers that are represented in here during the next fiscal year, if there are changes to that, we will come back to the council and, and let them know, and propose any possible budget revisions that are needed off of that. But as this sits right now, you will see those cost centers kind of ebb and flow in and out.
In staudions. Um, we, we've actually reduced the number of administrative positions. We believe we need to hire more, and I'm trying to think of anything else on the, on the, within the old IPS structure. So your FTEs, which are gonna make the decisions that we feel like we absolutely need. At the same time, we also eliminated several positions, and we also went truth in advertising and making certain employees that were working in a certain fund, were funded in that certain fund. For whatever reason, the former IPS administration didn't have those coded correctly. So the, the goal would be is that you would, if you sandwiched this all back together again, your cost would essentially be the same. The only other major cost that would be added to would be your Elevate cost, which is reimbursed by Elevate for the new parks, which, storm drainage, I forget what is repairs and supplies under storm drainage. It, it, it was about, he needed another hundred and, I want to say, $57,000 or so that we increased that line item as well, just for small.
And, and I, the, what was driving that question yesterday is, of course, what, what we're trying to do is look at it and go, where, where, where are our expenses going up? Where are they being contained? And where are they going down? And of course, reshuffling, um, the cost centers. So Carly, what we also talked about yesterday, if we, the council, are trying to do that. So if, if, if you, if you can't compare it up in this line and that line because there's organizational changes that affect it, okay. Well, if you bring it all down to the bottom line, million, 2023 proposed 175 million. Is, is that an accurate way for us to assess how much money the city is spending in, in supporting these departments, or are there?
To do comparative purposes. Um, in fiscal 23, there has been a change in accounting methodology that we have applied when it comes to pass-through revenue for the public school system.
Pass-through, okay.
So we collect a certain amount of, call it even at 20 million right now. But we collect it, and then we immediately, and are required to, we are not allowed in any way to keep any of it. We collect it, and then we immediately pass it to the Board of Education. Um, in prior years, that has been listed as an ex, the, the pass-through part to them has been this other operating line that you would see on page 24. In fiscal 22 and in fiscal 21, that amount that we collected and then expended is actually shown in that line item.
In that 178 down there?
In the, yes, sir. It's in the 178. So if all things were equal, in fiscal 23, you would probably actually see 195 at that bottom line.
Okay.
That's that one major change that would make it incomparable.
Okay, well, that's, um, that's not in, we're actually 15 over what we've sort of been running.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You've got to, I mean, again, we talked about earlier, factoring in those inflationary costs. Got your fuel costs. You've got everything related inflationary factors in that cost as well. So it's, that's, that's the truth in advertising we're trying to give you is.
Yeah, in my, my initial comment.
21 was the COVID year.
Was what? Yeah.
The, because of COVID.
We tightened up 10% roughly.
Yeah, and then 22, we deal back, and 23, we, we're now back to that full strike.
Okay.
So Carly, it's, it's not, it's a zero effect on revenue on the top line. You bring in 20.
So like, so if you flip back to that page 23 where we talk about revenues, you'd see that same exact effect. So, and you know, fiscal 21, 162 million of revenues includes that pass-through.
That 20 million.
Right. Does in 22 as well. And so in 23, if we're doing all comparable, we.
As I'm trying to learn it too, just like everyone else, that pass-through, 20 million.
Yes, sir.
Would it ever be notated in transfers from other funds or?
Agency. So no, sir. It's really, it's just shown as, and I'll show you exactly where it is. This might help. On page 32, you'll see the very, very top line item.
Sales.
Sales tax, public school bond, 21 million. And then you'll see it flowing, you'll see it coming in, and then you'll see it immediately flowing back out. So they're not, it's not out. So it has a net effect of zero on our budget, whereas in prior years, we were showing it inflated in both places. Does that make sense?
Makes sense, sir.
We are a little ahead of schedule. We've got, now where's Brandy here? So for public purposes, do we have to stick to the timeline in the breakdown? Or is it as simple as, can we have to observe the, the break?